Seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 6:32 PM on Tuesday, May 9. And our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes, which for school committee members, if you're logged in on the Board Docs app, you will be able to see the draft minutes. I think the only edit that I would suggest is the spelling of Ben's last name. Change from HA to HE. Any other comments, edits? Peter?
So just to confirm, we don't have any info if I'm looking at the right version? By the way, I'm going to be looking at my phone tonight because that's where I'm on Board Docs. So after the five-minute break, CDEF, we don't have any info on?
Oh, this is the one that so, correct. So we, let's not vote on this. I, this is the one that we were missing, that we had the video issue. That's right. I didn't hear from anybody and I apologize, I didn't follow up, but if any of, so my ask is that any school committee members that took notes, if you're able to email me the notes that you took, and I will compile the notes that are respective notes to send over to Mike.
Yeah, you can send it to me, yeah.
And Sasha to get them added to this, these minutes. With that, we'll move on to public comment. And we will invite folks in the room who wish to give a public comment to, and you don't have to come yet, but to come to the table. We asked that people speak, do you see how close my mouth is to the microphone? It's important so that the people that are watching you on TV from home can hear you. Because we'll be able to hear you, but the TV won't be able to hear unless you're right up close to the microphone. And so when I call you, please come, state your name, and we'll, you'll have three minutes to read your comments. And once we've gone through the room, then we'll move on to the email and recording. So with that, we open the floor and invite anybody who wishes to speak.
Hi, I'm Eli. This is Gil and this is Isaac. We are fifth graders at Fort River and we're here to talk to you about the, we're running a campaign to help improve the treatment of refugees. And we've partnered with like the refugee, the Welcome Home Refugee Resettlement Program. And they requested for volunteers because that's one of their needs. And so we're hosting a volunteer drive where people who are interested can volunteer in a circle of care, which is a group of six or more people from the Fort River community who can help like the many refugees in our local area. And if, you can always visit the Welcome Home Refugee Resettlement Program website if you need more information. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can reach out to our fifth grade class by contacting Mr. Austin at austin@t.org. Isaac, do you want to speak now?
Um, we made, uh, sorry, um, we, we did some social media posts on, um, on the Fort River Instagram account. And we hope people could repost it, so we reposted to spread the word. And we also, uh, the fact, we also got press release published in the Hampshire, the Daily Hampshire Gazette. Um, so we, to try to spread the word more, to help refugees. And we also, we also went on to the Fabius 413. Um, so now we're hosting a necessities drive that will, um, that started on May 1st and will end on the 15th. So, yeah, I guess, yeah, we're just, yeah, people can drop off items in the Fort River community. Or, yeah, and if you repost it, then people can see it. Yeah, and get more, um, yeah, yeah, and so then they can see it and, yeah, help more refugees and drop off more items.
So basically, we got like inspiration from a refugee who came in from Afghanistan. And he shared his experiences with us, and basically we were inspired to like make a difference. And so, uh, yeah, that's where our inspiration came from and, yeah. So we talked to him and a, Mr. Austin's neighbor, Margot, who helps refugees. Um, and so, yeah, that's the other side of the flyer. And so that's where our inspiration came from.
Yeah, and you can see the items that we need, which are, yeah.
On the other side.
Yeah, on the other side of the flyer.
Thank.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, bye.
Yeah.
Appreciate the bravery that it takes for coming to a meeting like this and speaking and being broadcast on TV with that. So thank you very much for sharing that. Any other public comment?
Hi, it's a tough act to follow, but I will. I'm Katie Letzowski, I'm the parent of a Fort River guy in fifth grade. I just want to express my thanks for your recent update, Dr. Morris, about the recom- recomposition of the leadership in the district. I do still have reservations however, though, knowing that we do house the Combinantes program at Fort River. And seeing all of the asset that Mr. Fernandez has brought to our school, both in terms of his IEP knowledge, special education knowledge. He, I've sat through many an IEP meeting, both from one side of the desk and the other. And I've, just the grace and poise with which he calms the crowd and runs a meeting is like never that I've seen before in my career and my parenting career. And again, the Combinantes program, having someone in a leadership role who is Spanish-speaking, I think speaks volumes to, to really solidifying and having that impact in the school culture. So I'm hoping that things be worked out appropriately so that we can have someone as great or maintain Mr. Fernandez's presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak? Seeing none. And we'll move on to the email comments.
I just, I just want to again, thank the three students for coming and their leadership. I would have never been brave enough to do this at your age. I just want to share that I'm really impressed with you, both in terms of your public speaking, but also for the work that you're doing that's so critical for those in our community. So I just want to personally say thank you and your examples, I think for all of our students about taking a role in leadership and making sure those, everyone in our community has what they need. So I just wanted to personally thank the three of you. I appreciate it. Do you want me to, I figured?
Yeah, thank you. There were no voice recordings received, so unless there is somebody in the audience that wishes to speak, we will close public comment. Next up is superintendent update.
Sure. Thank you. So a couple of things, I just want to thank Fort River for hosting kindergarten, Title I kindergarten readiness event. That was last week. So thank you for our Fort River friends here, for rising kindergarten students. As I said, that's been a long term, we've been talking about that for a very long time, about how do we provide support and resources for families before they step foot in our school of students. So Marta Guevara, other folks also, Stephanie Joyce, I want to thank them. Yesterday, I was fortunate, there was an event for superintendents and legislators. The new secretary, Dr. Tutwiler, Secretary of Education of Massachusetts was there. Curriculum Coordinator Mary Kylie came with me and he wanted to hear from Western Mass superintendents in schools, what were some challenges unique to the 413 that you may not hear inside 495 or even the Worcester area? And appreciate him coming out, both our state legislator and state, or state representative and state senator were there actually. Senator Comerford was the primary organizer of the event, along with a collaborative in Northampton. And I was given the, the four of us were asked to speak for superintendents and my topic was fiscal cliffs. So not exactly inspiring content, but, you know, something that all of us in Western Massachusetts are, you know, in some ways maybe a little more acutely aware of than some folks else. Where we also talked about how slight declines, so I had very few slides, but about declining enrollment. So there's this perception that if you have a slow decline in enrollment, that all of a sudden you can realize significant savings. And the reality is, you know, in our current schools, we have 21 unique units, right, grade levels within a school. So when you have a slow declining enrollment, it's very unlikely that you'll be able to recoup costs for that enrollment. So I tried to show that visually on a slide. And also that many of the well-intentioned efforts of the government to help, ESIR being, you know, the most effective one. But the Student Opportunity Act, which does put literally, no, there's no benefit to our district. And that's not to say it's not a really good thing, but for us and most of the districts in Western Mass, particularly because of declining enrollment and some other factors, there's no upside to. As well as the quote-unquote millionaire's tax or fair share amendment, which also doesn't benefit our schools how it currently constructed. So I think it was good he heard that. There were other people speaking about the impact of rural schools, impact on Chapter 70 and how little it impacts us here in Western Massachusetts. And there was some good dialogue at the end of the session, so I just wanted to share, I appreciate that. Last week, I had a RIAC meeting, Racial and Balance Advisory Committee. And what was a little unique in a positive way about this one is there were representative from MASC, so Glenn Kuchar was there, as well as Tom Scott, about a number of the initiatives around diversity and equity that are going on. And our big piece of, my big piece of feedback, I think it was shared by the group, is we need to share that, right? Just because good things are happening, if it doesn't get shared, then people don't know that it's happening. And there's obviously more work to do, but I really appreciated the partnership of RIAC and working with those two organizations, something we've been asking for for a while. So, and Desi was there obviously as well. Nick's here, you'll hear from Nick later. But just a reminder that June 2nd, Friday, in the late afternoon and early evening at Wildwood, is a celebration of Nick's tenure. He would frame it differently, I'm going to frame it the way I'm going to frame it, Nick. But it just, it's an open invitation for folks in the community who do want to come down. There'll be a band there, there'll be, you know, a parade and just encourage everyone to celebrate Nick's incredible work in the district as both kindergarten teacher and a principal. So I just want to say that. Ice cream and popcorn, sure. Nick knows how to draw a crowd much better than me. You can see that in our, how we described it. Nick goes right to that place. But, no, I got one more meeting with the Amherst School Committee, at least to be able to celebrate Nick, you know, in this context. So I'll save it for that session, but I just wanted to say that event's coming up. The town and, and the schools will be starting to organize a fiscal sustainability working group. I shared a memo on that from the town manager with the school committee a little earlier tonight, just looking at this fiscal cliff. And how are we going to look at maintaining the high-quality schools we have with the fiscal pressures we have as well? So that's coming up. I'll probably have more on that at our next meeting, because that was something that just sort of, we talked about just the last week or two with the town. Two more, oh, three more things. So Wildwood's Multicultural Fair is on the 18th at 5:30. After a multi-year absence, back with a bang, full multicultural fair, fashion show. So that's exciting. At Fort River, some Mucho Gusto events, which was music in Spanish. Last week, K to three, but this week, we've gotten some feedback that we want to make sure that our explorers classes have full access. And this is one example. There's also some after-school examples to try to make accessible Spanish language, if not formal instruction, through an immersion program, exposure and experience. So this is another example of that. So I want to thank the Fort River folks and Katie Richardson for her work on that. And finally, I was going to say, even though we didn't, even if we didn't get public comment on it, but just want to describe a little bit about the Fort River administrative shifts. Everything that you write about Julio is true, he's wonderful. I'll say that with him here and I'd say it if he wasn't. And so all that, those pieces of feedback are absolutely accurate, you know? And again, this is another district I work for and so I'll be careful not to cross boundaries in how I describe that. But it really was trying to think about all the districts, all the students in all, in all three of my districts, and what leadership models we needed and where there was capacity to improve the experience that we have for students. And so that's where the determination came down. I think the feedback I've received about making sure that there's Spanish-speaking person or people in leadership at Fort River is absolutely accurate. person or people in leadership at Fort River is absolutely accurate. And sort of the, the adjustment is that Katie Richardson, who's our ELL and dual-language coordinator, is going on a leave, very exciting leave for her next year. And she's okay, we've talked about it publicly. And, and so the, the model that we're looking at is replacing her with a half-time administrator who can kind of manage some of the ELL and dual-language pieces. And, and we are aiming to have that be someone who is a Spanish speaker, a native Spanish speaker, as well as a 1.0 leadership position at Fort River around the Comanantes Program and also family engagement. So a teacher leader position and who doesn't have other teaching responsibilities. And so it will increase capacity, at least in terms of numbers. At Fort River, it maintains having Spanish-speaking folks in leadership positions. And actually, because it is a bit of an expansion of FTE, we're hoping that the 1.0 leadership, teacher leader position has more time for family engagement than someone who is a full-time assistant principal, not about Julio, but just someone who has that other day job might have. So I just wanted to share, you know, the full picture and I'll own that, our communication of that on the front end. Just things happen quick and we didn't get all of that right, so we sent a second communication yesterday trying to clarify those pieces. And I think, I, I, I want to publicly say, for people who are advocating for Julio to stay and talking about the loss, that's all true, right? This is not something I'd argue against. It's my job, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, is think about all 2,500 students and what their needs are. And, you know, it'd be great if other situations were such that we didn't have to think as broadly. In this situation, I felt like I did. But it is a loss for the Fort River community for one year. I just want to kind of reiterate, because that's sometimes, I could have been more clear in my communication, this is, this is for next year. We plan to do a principal search at the middle school next year and kind of return to a more typical model in terms of roles at that school. But I also have a lot of confidence in both Tammy, I have confidence in the model, I have confidence in Chris Cusack, who's coming in with a tremendous amount of special education experience to be able to lead. He's not someone who hasn't been in a role before through the special education experience. A lot of his role is being in IEP meetings and supporting students with special needs, particularly with the population of Fort River. That's something that Julio's done exceedingly well and it's a continued need and I do believe he'll be able to fill that role as well as contribute to the whole school as well. So I both want to acknowledge the feedback I've received, honor that feedback and sort of explain a little bit of my thinking, both across the districts and thinking about students, but also at Fort River. And, and, you know, what I hope will be some increased capacity to do some of that critical work around Comanantes, but also around family engagement. And that is my update for this evening, I think. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Question, Jennifer. I don't know if this is appropriate to ask, and you can tell me if it's not, but the new position that Mr. Fernandez will be taking, the interim one-year position, is that considered like a promotion or a temporary promotion, or is it more like a lateral move? Again, I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask.
It's fine with me, it's all public information. So in terms of the APAA contract, which is our contract with our administrators' union, there are multiple types of assistant principal, but the only one who has a contract that is extended the number of days is one that's at the high school. So this would be, I think, considered technically a lateral move in terms of that. I think, you know, in terms of other pieces, one could, you know, Julio's worked, it's funny to talk about you're here, but I'm just going to say you're here. But, you know, in terms of broadening experiences and getting more experience, right? You know, that there's connotations, I suppose, and, and other pieces that, that I think aren't, you know, that are more opinion, but in terms of a factual answer, it's a lateral move.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry to leave long-winded, but I just want to explain the full picture.
Peter?
Yes, I'm happy you got a chance to talk to the Ed Secretary there. I'd be interested if you could just describe a little bit more like what the, what was the vibe in the room? Was it just a happy, hey, he's out here, let's, let's check out the classrooms? Or was there some, was there like serious and repeated clear communication message of urgency in terms of, like the fiscal cliffs you were talking about? And I'd love to see your slides, the concept that we don't recoup our cost per student for each reduced student, that, that's, you know, that's at the core of, of any reform that's going to happen in charter school funding, for example. Like that's, that, that is the core principle that explains why the, the funds transfer is so equitable. So it's, it's sometimes a hard concept to explain, because if you think about it quickly, well, you have one less student, you should have your expenses divided by your number of students, less expenses, and that's what you save, which is obviously not borne out. But yeah, I was, I'm glad you had that opportunity.
Sure, I'll just share briefly, I'll share the slides, they're, they're very few in number and they're not, they're more images, because we had a very limited time to speak. So I find that if I'm going to speak for five minutes, I should have very few words on slides, because otherwise it's not a very good presentation model. So I think what was publicly reported is, I think after our meeting, he went and visited Northampton and visited, I think it was Pioneer, up, up near the Vermont border. Our meeting, the presentations were all pretty similar in theme, even if the subject was different, which is, we're really teetering financially. And if there's no intervention, the system's not going to work of educating students in Western Mass. For instance, my colleague at Mohawk talked about her elementary kids all have 50-minute bus, 50-minute bus rides, but her buses are a quarter to half full, because geographically, it's this enormous geographic region, right? And very few, very sparsely populated. And so, you know, the state continues to say, well, you know, if you want to cut costs, you could just reduce your buses. You don't need that many buses for that many students. And it's like, yeah, but the bus rides would be two hours long, right? If you tried to fill a bus in like Chester, right? And that, those kind of communities. So I think it was all very, the themes, we didn't plan it together, it was like, your, your assignment's this, your assignment's this, but it all really flowed well. Other people talked about declining enrollment, how it affects the foundation budget in Chapter 70 as well. So I think it was a pretty honest, like, we need help here and we're not in Metro West and maybe Metro West needs help, but they don't need the help that we need. So that was, that was explicitly the focus, I think. He, the secretary heard that, he made some comments afterwards. He talked about how the governor's budget has increased kind of rural aid, which doesn't affect this district, but does affect, you know, some of my others. He talked about regional transportation and how that's being funded in the governor's budget. And he said, like, those shouldn't be seen as we've solved the problem, those should seen, be seen as we're hearing the problem and we're working on fixing it over time. So, you know, we'll see, but I thought he had a reasonable response to hearing four presentations that were pretty, pretty similar in theme about fiscal pressures and being in Western Massachusetts and how the government interventions, they may be well-intentioned, but for large swaths of the Commonwealth, they actually, there, there's some examples of actually them negatively impacting, because minimum contribution's gone up in some communities and, and, and so there's been some unintended consequences of some of those that hit some of our districts. We're not quite in that category, but yeah, it was, that was the tone. It was, it was very dramatic, it was very much talking about staffing shortages, you know, that, that when you're in a rural or less suburban area or more. And he actually had to say that same thing, it really, that part sounded a lot like his experience in Lynn, in urban districts, the, the staffing shortage part. It seems like outside the suburbs, those experiences are pretty similar, actually. So trying to summarize to our meeting quickly is probably not, not a great strength of mind, but that's sort of the, the gist. But it wasn't a happy-go-lucky, everything's great meeting, it was quite the contrary. And that was the theming from the senator, from Senator Comerford, when she set it up.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you. I'll send the slides, they're, they're not that exciting to look at, but the pictures are pretty dramatic. The last picture has like someone looking at it at a horizon and the theme was like, if nothing else happens, that horizon looks really scary, right? You know, that, that we need some help and we don't see the obvious, oh yeah, that's coming on the horizon to help us fiscally, like, that's where we need help, because without that, there's just, people are, are starting to get hopeless about the fiscal situation in their districts out here.
I, I think what really strikes me about what you just described is, I quote, I literally wrote it down, is like, we're teetering. And, and then I forget, I didn't capture the rest of what you said, but it was like, the model's going to fail. And, and I think, you know, the more frequently we can say that in public, the better, because I don't get the sense that that's widely understood. And, I mean, we can talk at length about our local media, but I don't think the Gazette article actually covered that, that aspect of it very well. So, I mean, I don't have an answer for how do we get it more, other than, you know, at every single one of these meetings, even if we're not specifically talking about the budget, I think, you know, talking about what that work, it also connects really, interestingly, to the other topic that you mentioned in your update, which is the school Fiscal Sustainability Working Group that the town manager is proposing. And I'm just curious if you've had conversations yet about the composition of that working group? I don't, it's fine to say, no, we haven't, you don't have to give an answer if you haven't. But, you know, in, you know, adjacent to the conversation with the secretary, it does wonder if, if there should be some, if there could be some sort of state-level involvement in that working group also.
Yeah, so not quite, in terms of answering your question about composition. But going back to your first comment, I think what Mary Kylie, our curriculum coordinator, one of her pieces of feedback, she hadn't been to an event like this before, was what she shared with me, is the other three speakers, how similar the scenario is, that, you know, sometimes, you know, and I fall prey to this as well, you know, you get so engaged in your own community, you don't realize that your neighboring communities are facing very similar challenges. And so that, it doesn't, it's not heartening, that's not the word, but it is, you know, the aha is that, you know, we're working really hard on here on Amherst and yet the problems are structural and they're beyond us as well as, that we have to work within our local context. And, and it was striking to her to hear from the other three districts.
Peter?
So since you brought it up, I, I guess I'll just, you know, add my two cents about the fiscal working group. So I applaud the, I applaud the notion and, and the effort. And it's, it's, you know, it's, it's better than not doing, than not looking at the problem, I guess I should say. And, and I like the fact, I think in his memo, town manager Walkman spoke of having, having, what do you call it, subject matter experts be part of this initial group, people from HR and finance and procurement. That is not just like public officials talking to each other and about policy, but people are actually living the nuts and bolts of our budgets day to day. So I, that, that's, I like that, I look forward to hearing that, that perspective. But I, I also think it's, it's important to not give the public the impression that some wonderfully creative solution is going to emerge out of that that solves this problem. Like, we have a systemic budget situation that is out of, out of the control of this committee, out of the control largely of local government, and is largely a result of the state-level funding of education and the policies and whether they're going to change or not. And there's no indication that they will. So I, I think this kind of a group can help, make sure that we are doing the very best we can with the money that we have. I think, you know, I think local governments, you know, by and large have done a very good job so far, but this is, this is excellent, we should absolutely squeeze every single drop we can out of these budgets. But, you know, there's, we're not going to suddenly uncover the, you know, 1.7, 1.8 million that charter school funding is, is draining from our budgets, right? That's not, and it's not going to end with a recommendation, you know, that, for more equitable state funding that finds its way immediately to the State House. You know, we've, we've talked about these things again and again, and it's great that we have our local state reps on board with this and that they are pounding the table on these things, but we've, we've talked about the problem there, right? Is that they're, they're outgunned at the State House and, and, and everybody wants, wants a piece of the, of the limited pie. So it's, you know, it's, it's pretty stark, I think, when, when I look at it, and I know, I know you're not saying anything different, I just, I just don't want to, I, I guess I would, the last thing I would say is, you know, to anybody who's really concerned about the future of our school's finances, embrace the cognitive dissonance that we don't have a solution and that it, that it's, that it does not look good right now. And that these things, you know, will help to the degree that they can, but it's, it's not going to solve the problem.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I think just from a chair's update, just very briefly, Mike and I just came, Doug is still there, or hopefully not. The Finance Committee of the town, Town of Amherst just had its meeting, I don't know if it was their first meeting of the review, but tonight they were reviewing the library and the elementary schools budget tonight. So it was a brief meeting, answered some questions. I didn't see all of their questions, but their, the questions were around the difference between the budget that we approved and guidance. So I explained that, not sure I did the best job that I, I could, but it sort of explained sort of how we got there. And I think the other question was about, that, that we heard at that time was regarding declining enrollment and, and increasing in staff. I think that was more general, beyond just the Amherst School District. So it was a good conversation and Doug was still there when we left. And just as a reminder for folks that don't track very closely, the school committee present, approved and sent to the town manager a budget that was $84,000 greater than what the guidance was that we received from the town council. The town manager presented his budget, he's required also to present the school committee-approved budget. And so the town council then decides which of those budgets will be approved. Moving on to school committee updates. Jennifer?
So I have a summary from the JCPC, the Joint Capital Planning Committee. So for, I know you guys all know, but for members of the public, the JCPC is made up of representatives from the town council, the library trustees and the school committee, and I'm one of the two school committee members on the JCPC. And the goal of the JCPC is to bring together the three major elected bodies in the town to discuss capital planning needs and make recommendations to the town manager. And the JCPC does this every year. And we typically meet weekly in February and March with the aim of delivering a written, written recommendations to the town manager by the end of March, which we did do this year. So the final report for Fiscal 24 includes recommendations for school spending on items including electric bus upgrade or battery replacement, upgrading the Wi-Fi at Crocker Farm, developing infrastructure for charging non-bus school-owned electric vehicles, HVAC improvements and interior and exterior improvements across the district, as well as replacing a diesel bus with an electric bus, plus the charging infrastructure needed for that. And that will also be partially funded by a state grant. So you can find the JCPC's report on the town's website, if you just Google "Amherst JCPC," it's probably the first thing that will pop up.
Thank you. Any other school committee announcements or updates? Peter?
Thanks for the JCPC update. I'm just curious, like, was there anything that the schools requested that we were denied for, or was there any, like, significant disagreement among the group about what to fund, or was it fairly pro forma?
There was nothing that was denied. There was one item that was originally stated as a, let's see, there was one item that was modified slightly to include, I think it was upgrading an electric bus and the JCPC suggested it'd be like upgrade slash new battery for the bus to give us options. So that was the only modification to their requests.
Thanks.
Good. If there's no other updates, then we'll move on to new and continuing business. And first up is our school improvement plan presentation from Wildwood and Fort River.
Yeah, so Wildwood come up first. And I just want to start by, as, as I'm prone to do, just previewing that this is a really, both of them, I'll speak more generally, are long thorough documents that went through a tremendous amount of process and community engagement. You're going to hear an overview or snapshot, and that's, you know, as we've developed our protocols as school committee, we've tried to make presentations more brief and include the amount of dialogue. So if you're looking at a length, a length, relatively lengthy document and hearing a five-minute update and hear some of the key points, that's intentional. That's not because we don't get into the weeds, but we'd rather do that in a collaborative manner. So just wanted to preview that. You all can come up. I was actually like somewhat giving you time to come up. I can keep on talking, but no one wants that. So, so I just want to start by thanking Allison and Nick. And this is a nice one, because we have, you know, outgoing and incoming principals at Wildwood School and a dynamic team as well. So I will turn it over to them, I will bring this up on the screen and I'll just let you, let me know where you want me to go. Sound all right?
Hi, everyone. So it's my pleasure, I'm just going to do the introduction to this, because sitting where I am, it's just a great honor and privilege to work with Allison and have Allison be the one that's going to take Wildwood for the next three years through the school improvement plan. So what you'll see as she explains is her work in eliciting feedback and input from staff, students. eliciting feedback and input from staff, students, and family members in a way that, you know, really has, we haven't done at the school, to hear their voices. And student voices and family voices and staff voices, that's like a central piece of Wildwood's identity. And in the same way, is that she's taken what we've been doing at the core of Wildwood for the last three years and just built on that. And so I'm just thrilled to slide the muck over to her, because for the community, really, they're embracing this notion that we're just going to be going deeper, more thoroughly, and expanding on the work that we've been doing. And as someone who's stepping away from a school that I love, to have that confidence and assurance that that's going to happen with Allison, and the strengths that she brought to leading this, because she did lead this, the development of the school improvement plan, is just, it's really a thrill. So I'm going to slide it over. This is symbolic.
Hi, it's nice to be here with you. So our efforts were guided by surveys, and with analysis of those surveys, and we were able to get a good number of the staff, 74 staff members, all the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, 124 students who were there that day, or during that few weeks, I guess, that we were taking surveys, and then 74 family members, doing our best to do, reach out to families in demographics who were not as represented, so that we were hoping to create a database of responses that truly embodied our community and developed our plan from there. I think it's really important to know that this is having, this has the structure that we had before. And we made sure that if we were needed to tear the whole structure down and just create a totally different structure, we were open to that. But it really felt like the feedback that was coming through was clearly within these pillars that we established back when we first did this before the closure. And, and so we decided to continue with it and to create a structure that would be reinforced, as Nick said, that are strong practices that are happening in parts of our building, and to make it deeper and more consistent and scalable throughout the building. The first thing I want to highlight is all the faculty did get a chance to review the vision. We did not alter it. They felt that this embodied who we are as a community. And the thing that was added, if you can move a little up, I just want everybody to be clear about it. It says, "We are welcoming," and our vision is welcoming and appreciating everyone just as they are is the foundation of our community. Everything else in this vision is exactly the same, but people wanted to add appreciating everyone just as they are. Wildwood is a place where you can be who you are, and we will be there to support you in developing your sense of identity, your sense of skills, and, and your sense of community. So that was really important to our staff. And then we have this pillar structure, and we can, we'll just stay there, just so that you have a visual. But I just want you to be aware of some of the goals that are aligned with each of those pillars. The character pillar is based in character development. And in this area, we wanted to strengthen this children's ability to develop their friendships. We want to make sure that there are more cross-grade relationships during the closure. That all got dismantled, our efforts to do that. And so we need to not just build back what we had, but make it stronger. It's clear from a number of people in our community that that is desired. We want to make sure, and we, and we have action steps to make sure that these are measurable experiences that the children experience. We want to make sure that the anti-bullying efforts, because the children said, we want to make sure there are no bullies, that was something that came through. So we want to make sure they understand the curriculum is going to be as clearly delineated as possible for them. We're going to emphasize community service. That was something that came through. We will use a consistent curriculum with circle forward as our restorative practices and our circle building efforts. We started doing circles when we first did the school improvement plan at the last cycle. And so we want to deepen that and to make sure that we're using circles in a variety of formats, because we have seen the effects of that in our community, and it's definitely something that we want to build on. We want to deepen our use of trauma-informed practices and also our toolbox strategies for self-regulation. When the students came back from the closure, I want to say I'm very proud of our school for, you know, I'm reading articles about schools having a horrible time, and I really feel like our students felt held and supported. We had some really strong social-emotional practices that we were implementing in the, in the post-closure time. And we want to make sure, because we're not reading that the mental health of our children is something that's improving. This is not an easy world, and we want to make sure we give them the strategies that they need to help themselves stay regulated. The other pillar that we will have is the curriculum design pillar, and this is where we get into the importance of student reflection. That's something that really came through, that people really want to see students get to this metacognitive experience of understanding what they're learning, why they're learning it, and being able to express that. So we are going to make sure that the teachers have time. This is the piece that came through, the teachers need more time. How are they going to be able to plan and implement these things that require that level of reflection? How are we going to make sure the teachers have time to do tuning protocols? It's something we learned with this last cycle, where we reflect on each other's work and give feedback in a structured way. So that is going to get deeper. Student-led celebrations, that's something that we will be focusing on a great deal in the spring. We have the presentations of learning that happened last year with our sixth graders, and we want to expand this idea of how do we help every grade create these opportunities for not just the students to reflect on their learning, but how do we bring the community into that? And then we are going to make sure that our lessons deepen our reflection of our community through ethnic and gender identities, that it's reflected in our curriculum. Then we have an equity pillar. The equity pillar is a space where we make sure that our staff and students are exploring ways that our community, different people in our community can be marginalized, and how do we create structures to support and dismantle that? And so this pillar, we are going to be pushing into not just dismantling racism and sexism, but also ableism. As you know, Wildwood is the home of the Intensive Learning Center, and we want to make sure that our students in that program are more fully represented all throughout every aspect of our community, and that more children, because right now we have some children who are really great buddies, and they really partner well with our students with intensive needs. We want to make sure that all the children have opportunities to do that, and that all the children understand preferred communication methods, that we create a culture that really celebrates our ILC program. Our, another pillar is our family partnership pillar. It was very clear that the pandemic really impacted us in terms of our family partnership. It was an aspect that really shifted dramatically quickly, and it was something that we have to build back stronger. So that's where we are going to have more frequent opportunities and use our best practices and make sure that they're represented in all grades, and that the parents are able to get information on the different activities for children, and that they are understanding the progress more frequently. I want you to know that the report cards are not being, they're not connecting for families. That was clearly stated. And so we need to work, I think, as a district to figure out how to make that work better. Last I checked, we were in the double digits of the number of children's report cards that still were not accessed. So I think that there's something that is not working with that system, and we got to figure it out, because we worked really hard to do outreach to help everybody access. And I even had families of all different strata who were saying that, oh, I lost the password, or, you know, it just, it's not connecting, so we've got to figure that out. And I also want to make sure, I'm a big, I like tech stuff, and I want to make sure our website is being utilized effectively. And, and it's a good, websites are good tools, but we've got to use them to make sure that they're working. Our student engagement pillar, it's, again, we're going back to the reflection, students setting monthly regular goals, making choices, and being, and feeling responsible for those choices, so that they are clear about their academic, social, and emotional progress. We want to make sure that they have opportunities to display and share their work, that we use empathy interviews to make sure that we are connecting with children, especially in the demographics who might be hardest to reach. Children were very clear that they want more field trips. So how do we get a list of field trip opportunities and make, and make that process easier for teachers? Because that was clear, that that was not as easy as it could be, I think. And they will be setting learning goals, and they also advocated for clubs. So we're going to try to figure out how to get a club structure that is stronger for students to access that as well. And I also want to make sure, I didn't say it, but I think it was back at, I want to say curriculum design. We are going to make sure that we have gender and sexuality curriculum for K through six implemented. If you let, it's not going to be like the whole year, but it'll be a solid core of lessons that help us strengthen our gender identity and sexuality education for the students. We do this in the older grades. We have activities that we have done for, in terms of gender identity for younger grades, but it's not as consistent as I think it could be, and that is important right now as our children are coming into these ways of understanding themselves. And then we have a pillar that the Fort River team was able to develop that I thought was beautiful, so I'm going to let them just say that. But that basically is our plan for the next three years. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you.
We are here to answer. We've talked a lot about it.
Any questions? Jennifer?
Thank you for that presentation. That was, that's great. And it's, it's great to see all the, all the input that you got from the community on it. You mentioned cross-grade experiences, and I'm really happy to hear that's one of the, one of the elements of the character pillar, it looks like. Because I think it's so important, I feel like kids get so fixated on their peer group, so I think it's really great to have, for them to have experiences with other grades. Can you give one or two examples of what those cross-grade experiences look like?
Right, right now, what we have is a lot of buddy-ing systems, where children will present their projects that they're doing to another grade. They might present their writing or things like that. We also, in the past, I don't know if the, the math instruction for kindergarten, that's something that has gone very well in the past. We need to get it going again, where the sixth graders did that. And so, like, these different opportunities to help the older children be mentors to the younger children, and then to help people in general just be able to present what they've been able to do, because you have automatic audience, which is a very important aspect to the project-based learning initiatives. And so that's a part of our audience-building profiles.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ben?
Yeah, I just, I just had a question. Like, you had mentioned, I guess, I wrote it down, as like varied circles, different types of, of circles. And I know most people are used to looking at like restorative circles as being like, you know, someone was harmed or wronged, and we're trying to come together. I was just wondering if you could expand on the different types that you guys are looking at using.
I, I know I'm talking a lot, Nick, are you, okay, anyway. So, yeah, we have, so over the course of these last few years, what is coming out is you have these different check-in circles, which is a way that a lot of classrooms will start the day. And that's a way to help teachers co-regulate with their students, because people are coming, waking up in a lot of different feelings. So you come in and you'd have a check-in circle. You have community-building circles, where you have an opportunity to share your thoughts about things that require a little more deeper reflection. And then you do have problem-solving circles, where you're talking about things that might be more general problems that might be happening, like if there was something that's been going wrong at recess, and you, and we need to work together to solve it. And then you also have the restorative circles, which we use with students and staff. We use all of these circles with everybody. It's really an important aspect for how we are building our community to help us not just understand each other, bridge different identities, but also to try to heal harm that has existed.
Thank you. Awesome.
Peter?
Thank you for that. As a, as a proud parent of a former Wildwood student, it's so, so awesome to hear, hear the evolution of things. I, I love what you had, what you had to say about, you know, ILC and equity and including them in the community. You know, one of my, one of my kids was, was in ILC when Nick was, actually, when Nick was principal. But I, it was just, it was such a great, I had so many positive experiences with, with students and with teachers who were just so open to inclusivity. And I found so often, too, that, you know, sometimes students who have really intensive special needs, special needs, it can be, it can be a little intimidating if you're a teacher or a student, but well, how do you approach somebody who, you know, you don't feel like your normal modes of interacting or communicating might work? And so I just found such an openness there. And I think that a lot of that was, was due to how, how the program, ILC itself was being run, but also because of, you know, the, the atmosphere the Nick established. So I just, I just had to say, I love hearing that from you for the future. So, you know, teachers needing more time. I mean, I, I hear that, like, I think, you know, when, when I think about what do districts need more, you know, funding is always like the number one thing that people ask for, but more time for teachers is like, is a pretty close number two, you know, for teacher collaboration, preparation, professional development, and, you know, and it's such a challenge, right? Because you can't expand the number of hours in the day. So how do you, how do you manage that effectively? I guess that's, I guess that's why you guys are so, you know, amazing at what you do. But, so, you know, so good luck with that.
I can speak a little bit to some of my ideas.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so that's it. Yeah, I'll start there. Yeah.
Okay. So we have already started to use different structures to create half-days for teachers to be able to do project-based learning. And I know that with the new math and ELA efforts that are coming in, we're going to have to figure out how to create some balance among those efforts. And so I'm playing with this idea in my head, we'll see, how to use our faculty early release days for more of a differentiated experience, so that it's not as much of a information being delivered, because I'm becoming more aware that the training, so people are really relying on their faculty meetings and their early release days for getting trained. And so how do I use that time? How do I help them have that, that time to meet their needs specifically? And that, if I can open that up, if you're saying you need more time for project, if I can open that up, well, I got you this information through an email and a 10, 15-minute update, and now you have 45 minutes to work on something that, that maybe we didn't have that kind of structure before. So I am playing with different ideas like that. But I'm going to be learning a lot this next year in trying to fill Nick's shoes. And these are just ideas at this point, but I am trying to figure out how we can create the time the teachers need.
Peter?
Yeah, so that's very interesting. And, I mean, anything we can do to support you, you know, obviously, you know, for real, like, if you think that there are, you know, dollars attached to this, you know, that's what we're here for, is to hear feedback about, you know, those kinds of things. I guess the other thing I'm curious about is, you know, so this is like a three-year plan, and if my math is correct, that three years of the last three years, that Wildwood will be a separate school, and then the next. So, so right after this plan ends, you're merging with the people in the back of the room.
The fabulous fort.
Right?
They're over there for the Wildwood.
Which will be awesome and amazing. I mean, two amazing communities coming together. It's going to be fantastic. But obviously, that impacts the identity of the school and the identity of the community. So I'm just wondering if you have any early thoughts about what that means to take, you know, two separate but really wonderful vibrant communities and try to envision at this stage what that might, what a process to get there might look like? Is that an intentional thing? Do you sort of just hands off and let it all flow, or, you know?
Because hands off and letting it flow works really well in Amherst.
Yeah, for sure.
No, I, I think that Tammy and I, Tammy, I think we get along really well. So I'm really looking forward to trying to envision how we embody this. The first, I'm going to just be very clear. The first thing that we're going to have to figure out, it's so simple, but it's going to be something, is Halloween, because we don't celebrate Halloween at Wildwood. And so those are the types of things that we have to start talking about in terms of how do you do celebrations? How do you honor the different communities? And how do you bring people together in a way that honors everything in your, in your history, but then also respects the communities who have really cherished the traditions you've created? We have our star values. They have love, you know? I mean, not that there aren't commonalities in those things, but we've got to figure out a way to build that. And I think that because we are collaborative, smart, caring people, I think we'll be able to bring that together. These things are always going to be struck, like, within an aspect of fear, though, because people are already thinking, what does it mean to bring two schools together? How many classrooms are there going to be? How many such-and-such number of staff are they going, you know? So this is another aspect to that, that I think we really need to think about. How do we create that structure and also create, manage people's expectations? So that'll, I'll be very interested in working with everyone to figure that out together.
Mike?
So thank you, Allison, for that.
So, uh, thank you, Allison, for that. I just want to say there's a role for, I think, us at this side of the table to play as well. I know that's on the agenda for a little later, but I think even, you know, we'll have a conversation. There's a link shared of another community that really engaged the larger, or another community where similar model was happening and engaging on things like naming, which have a lot of symbolic value. I mean, you, some people could scoff, oh, what's a name? But, but a name really brings about a lot of identity. And so I think there's roles for everyone in the community to play on that and appreciate the partnerships that have emerged. I think the other thing to note, um, sorry, Nick, um, I don't mean to speak around you, but, um, you know, Diane Chamberlain, who was formerly worked at Fort River is going, coming in, returning from, uh, far away and will be the assistant principal at Wildwood next year. And she obviously has a lot of linkages with our administrative team, as well as the staff and community at Fort River. And I think she can be a really critical link between those two communities and be really assisting us and, and all of us in helping think that through over the next three years. So just wanted to note, we're happy Diane's coming back. We're happy to welcome her back in this role. Um, she's coming back with a lot of world experiences, which hopefully she brings with us. Always helpful when people go far away and work in schools and come back with new perspectives. And I know, um, I know that's the case for Diane. So, um, just wanted to note those two things.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So I, I'm concerned about what you said about online report cards not being accessed. I know some of you may have this experience where your elementary child isn't always very forthcoming with their parent about what happens at school. I might hear a lot about recess, but I don't, I didn't hear a lot about other things. And I always appreciated having that piece of paper come to the house that has like commentary from teachers. Um, and, and then, and then I had my own struggles getting access to Power School as a middle school parent. So maybe this is more a question for Mike and something we can talk about at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think, uh, the short story is, I think we did a much better job this time in rolling out the online portal. So I don't think, and the clerical staff, as well as the schools, did amazing amounts of outreach work. And Allison and I have spoken about this. I don't, I'm happy to share it publicly. I think the concern I have is not necessarily just about the online part of it. It's about some families not accessing it where, we're, we're really clear and Allison referenced this, where there, there's not technology barriers. Um, that hasn't been the concern. So there's a disconnect between perhaps what's on the report card, how it's being shared and the impact it's having on families. So, I mean, I, I think, my concern is that it's less about technology use or communication of how to do it and more about where are our families in terms of the importance of accessing and the length that, you know, um, our report cards are really thick. They're really dense. And there's a lot of tremendous amount of, tremendous amount of work that our staff do to put that together. But I think we need to have a broader conversation of what are parents actively looking for in a report card? And are we matching that need? Um, cause sometimes from an educator point of view, like myself, I can really want a lot of things in there. And for the family's perspective, they want some core pieces of information that's understandable, reliable, and that may not match like quote unquote, a standards-based report card, which we've went to. So I think there is a broader conversation there. Um, but I think as compared to, cause we've spoken as well, I think as compared to some folks' experience, there was tremendous amount of outreach, support, passwords, resend, write paper copies for families we didn't have email ad- addresses for. Um, and I'm not suggesting we need to stay with the online, but I think the law, the broader concern I have isn't about online versus paper. It's about, are we connecting with families about what their questions are about their children's, how their children are doing in school? Um, cause I, I, that's where my concerns are more centered. I think this is more of a diagnostic tool to let us know that we may not be hitting the, hitting, hitting it where we want in terms of being successful in that regard. Sorry, but we could definitely have that.
Can I, to add on to what Mike's saying, I think, I just want to make sure people saw in the, in the improvement plan of what Allison was saying, that we definitely heard from families that they want to know more about what their children are doing and learning. And we did hear the survey loud and clear, that theme, like, I don't know what my kid's learning. I never see anything. And, and so our answer wasn't so much, I, I definitely, I agree that all of you can look on the report cards, was more students leading the way, sharing what they're learning, reflecting on their learning with parents. We had a hundred percent participation in our sixth grade presentations of learning. A hundred percent. Parents came, we set up, uh, appointments. They were so, Allison and I got to sit in on a few. They were so powerful. People were weeping. People were overwhelmed with listening to their child as this rite of passage in sixth grade. Share, oh, this was my goal. This is what I'm working on. This is what I'm doing in math. Here's my social emotional goal, um, and presenting that and all kids. So I think that's the way that we feel is the answer to parents not knowing, is that students, and as Allison said in the, in the improvement plan, every grade level can do this. Can share what they're learning multiple times, you know? And can do it in a way that, you know, that parents will know what's going on because their kid is talking about it and cares about it. So I just wanted to make sure they saw that.
Yeah, no, and I, I just want to second what Nick shared. I mean, I was able, I was invited, fortunate enough to be invited to a couple of them. And, you know, I saw exactly what Nick is describing. And parents who didn't know me at all were like, thank you so much. I was like, I had nothing to do with this. This is like all, you know, but it was so meaningful. So I use that example because I was like, I deserve no thanks for that. Like I'm an observer just like anybody else. But it was so powerful and so meaningful for the families to hear what their kids learned from their own vantage point. And I think that was the hook that got you to, you know, the hundred percent. So just want to, you know, double down on what Nick shared.
Ben?
Yeah, so, so yeah, I absolutely appreciate the, the more like student-centric approach to, to informing the parents. I, I just think that's like awesome groundbreaking and I think you guys are leading the way towards something wonderful, I think. But yeah, I, I appreciate the student-centered approach to that. That's awesome. I said that twice. Awesome, right? Super awesome. Yeah.
I appreciate everything. Also, I've had, um, I had several questions written down, but my colleagues asked them. So, um, I'm not going to ask you again. Um, but I, I will echo the, the comments about the, the student reflection and sort of building that out more deeply in the, in the school beyond sixth grade. Cause I think, I read something recently talking about sort of students, and this was more related to adult students, but seeing their teacher as an assessor and not as their mentor or coach in learning. And I think by flipping the tables on who's actually reporting out what they've learned and how, what their pro, what their goals were in their progress, it sort of helps, I, I can only imagine, it helps the student invest themselves even more in, in their learning progress in a, in a way that feels, I don't want to use the word empowering because they have the power, but, um, but sort of helps them recognize their own power and, and involvement in that too. Great. Thank you. Any other questions before? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nick.
I think you're going to have to get this started because your technology use is beyond my capabilities. I haven't used Canva before, so Julio, do you mind, uh, thank you. Sorry about that. Just click through.
Well, that was very inspiring. I'm always inspired by my colleagues at Wildwood, so thank you very much. I think Julio, you wanted to?
First of all, I want to, hi, my name is Julio Fernandez. I want to give a huge thank you to my school community, to my staff. Because for during this last year, I have, they've been very supportive. Excellent, um, members that have been working for the greater community. And I want to thank everyone for those kind words that were presented during this, uh, during this meeting. It, it touches my heart. It is, it makes me feel good that, and appreciated. And that's something that is very important. Um, what we're going to do now, I'm going to pass the microphone to our leader. Um, Tammy, she took charge of this whole process. Um, she guided us. She made time for us to be able to work as a team. And that's very important when we're developing a school improvement plan. So, partner?
All right. Thank you so much. Um, I have a tendency to talk fast. Um, I have had this habit since, uh, my student teaching days, more than 30 years ago. Um, so Mike, all right. So, you know, this is just something that I, uh, weekly send something to the staff. And just this idea of community, which we heard echoed in, uh, Wildwood's theme and their school improvement plan. Um, and then of course, the district mission and our school profile. I'm just going to highlight that we have about 400 students. Uh, more than 50% of our student body is, uh, our BIPOC. Uh, quarter speak a language other than English. We have two academic programs, both Commonantais and Explorers. And two district, um, special education programs. Ames, which is for students that have, um, autism spectrum disorder. And then Building Blocks, which is for students that have, um, significant trauma. So we are a community that is inclusive and welcoming to all. So, which I think dovetails nicely into our Fort River mission, which seeks to the, to support the development of the whole cultural, intellectual, neurodivergent, physical, social, emotional and creative child, in which all students are acknowledged, appreciated, nurtured and challenged according to their individual identities. And that's just a diversity statement that has been part of Fort River since 2005 and I think part of the district as well. Um, we had a very rich school council. We have actually, uh, one of the members is in, Laura Luciano is our, our grade one Spanish teacher, but also a parent. So we had four parents, uh, two special education teachers and adjustment counselor, Katie Richardson, who was referenced earlier. Um, so I think we, we had a, a school council that really embodied our student body. Um, but also showed just the level of dedication to our school improvement plan. Uh, so how do we know what we know? We did, did a lot. We did a family survey, family outreach, uh, staff survey. Um, utilized, uh, our data meetings as another way to cull information about what our next steps are. Uh, interview with our students. And we also had an opportunity where, um, as one of the final iterations of this school improvement plan, staff did a chalk talk outside, um, where they were able to, and I didn't get an image in, I'm sorry. But if you want to see it, I have it on my phone. Um, but it was really wonderful to be outside and, and have this opportunity to, for staff to meet together. Um, and add any other comments, questions, uh, for us to really look at and, and, uh, begin to sort of put the cap on this. All right. So, so from this, we developed five strategic objectives.
Keep going?
Oh, okay, good.
Am I on the right side or the wrong side?
No, you're on, just.
Do this one or the next full slide?
The next one. There we go. Uh, so we developed five strategic objectives, dual-language education, family engagement, our instructional practices, community and team building. Our dual-language education, um, and I'm not going to go through the, our, sort of our, our finer points, but just the development of the dual-language and instructional program to increase our students' academic outcomes in Spanish and English, as well as develop our bilingual, as well as develop bilingual and bicultural citizens. Um, one point that I'll make about this particular slide is really increasing opportunities, uh, within the school to do more collaboration, both across the Commonantais and the Explorers classrooms. Um, and to increase opportunities also for all of the, the staff and the specialized programs as well to really come together, um, in this way. Our strategic objective number two, um, our family engagement. Um, much of what you see here as our goals or our initiatives were really derived from what we heard from parents. Uh, we really want our families to know and engage with what we, the resources we have in our school. Um, to engage with curricular expectations so they know what their chi- chi- children or child are learning. Um, hold more school-wide events, um, or grade-level events or grade-band events. And really support our families in engaging in our school-wide activities and as well as any resources that we have. In terms of instructional practices, um, this was also gleaned from both listening to our students, uh, staff and our families. And, uh, and just also knowing what we know about research and evidence-based practices. Um, so really to consider ways to, um, support teachers to become skilled facilitators, um, to provide structured opportunities for authentic learning, to really increase opportunities for student voice. Uh, provide project-based or inquiry-based or phenome-based, uh, learning opportunities. Um, and really think about how to further differentiate and enhance instruction to meet the diverse needs of our population. And really consider ways to use data, um, as part of the instructional design. Our community goal is really to consider ways of thinking about Arcata Six alignment of social-emotional learning. Um, as indicated earlier by Allison, we're really seeing, uh, students in more need of connecting with adults, of learning, uh, who might have lagging social skills and need more supports in this area. Um, and to just build, uh, relationships with, with them, with other students and with adults. So really, uh, thinking about how to support our tier-two interventions. Um, considering how to use circles more, both community-building circles and, uh, problem-solving circles, and build towards restorative practices. And really consider how to develop in our line, our anti-racism curriculum, our social-emotional lessons. Um, and, and use a, a platform called DESA, which is research and evidence-based to support us in, in understanding which students really need support, identifying that, and really be able to provide those skills that have been identified, not just by this, uh, assessment, but by classroom teachers and families as well. So team building is, I think, a little bit to your point, Peter, from earlier. Um, is building a community, uh, between Wildwood and Fort River. I recognize, or, you know, Allison and I recognize that it's a, it's a big job. Um, but, you know, thinking about, are there opportunities for field trips? So Wildwood can come over and be part of the, uh, building of the new school. I think there's a lot of phenomenal opportunities for learning and growing. Uh, team building for both communities, uh, for families, for staff, for students. Really considering how to develop the bilingual practices, uh, for staffing and just understanding sort of the learning outcomes that come with that, because we'll be combining, uh, schools. And then really thinking about how to align our instructional practices, both through collaboration and also our, um, PLCs as well, our professional learning communities. So you give me a role, I follow it. Five minutes. Mike said five minutes. I was like, okay, I got this. Thank you. Questions? Peter?
Thank you very much. That was very efficient. I appreciate that.
I got to work on that.
Um, the, the, um, the, the, the DESA program that you, that you talked about was interesting under the umbrella of the community strategic, um, initiative. And could, could you just, uh, talk a little bit about more like what that looks like? Um, and, and what's, what, what the goals are and like what tier one, tier two is for, for, for those of us who might not be so well-versed in those terms.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Um, so the DESA program is an opportunity where, uh, there's a brief survey that classroom teachers or our guidance counselors have administered to all students. And then depending on the results of that, it might target certain students that, uh, we might need to do a longer form for. And then from there, these, these, um, questions are aligned with CASL. And if you ask, I know it's like a social-emotional, um, curriculum that is standardized. Uh, and it helps us to identify which skills might be lagging for those students. And we can sup- provide, um, lunch bunches, uh, check-in, check-out, check-outs more regularly. Um, as it relates to tier-one services, uh, that's just, you know, what's happening in the classroom. Whether it's morning meeting, community-building circles, uh, tier-two, this really helps us to identify which students might need more targeted support. This year, there were a few students, most of the students, I would say probably about 90 to 95%, we had already kind of identified. But there were a few students that were, we were a little bit surprised by. And so this really helped us to really differentiate and provide that higher level of support. Also connect with parents to say, hey, also connect with parents to say, hey, look what we found out. You know, you know, is this surprising? Is this something you knew? And this is what, this is how we're going to support that. Peter?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up comment. So it's really interesting, I, I think, you know, the, the idea of doing assessments for, you know, reading and writing, I think is a pretty commonly-understood idea, that you would, and then take that and you feed that into data. And, you know, we talked about our math curriculum earlier in terms of how we were doing that. But the idea that, that you could do that for social-emotional challenges and supports, and that you could then follow that up with targeted support, is, is a pretty fascinating concept. I mean, it's certainly not something we were doing, you know, decades ago, right? But all the more urgent and important, you know, with kids recovering from the pandemic and all these skills that they've, you know, not had the opportunity as, as much as kids have had in the past to, to engage in that and facing different challenges. So that's, that's, I, I love that it has that, that you have it up there as a high-level, you know, highlight of, of, of your focus. It's, it's a really interesting area for the, for the district to be focusing on and, and leading. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm just going to, like, I'm pleased to hear sort of the prevalence of the, of the circles and as a, and community circles, as well as problem-solving circles as a, as a core of the community at Fort River, as well as at Wildwood. So I recall that that was, you know, something that we've talked about in the past of wanting to see that, and so it's, it's heartening to hear that sort of rolled into your school improvement plan, and hearing how it's being used in a variety of ways, too.
Yeah, well, this year, we started off with staff-led circles, so we had a few staff trained, and then in, over the course of the year, we had staff lead and facilitate circles. Just the idea of building teachers as leaders, I think, is really important. And so it was really fascinating to see just staff communicating and building relationships with one another in a way that they hadn't been able to before. And it's always amazing to me, having worked at Fort River for 20 years, that there would be teachers I wouldn't see for weeks at a time. And so this really gave us an opportunity to really learn from one another and just know each other on a more personal level, which the idea really would be that as we're building these relationships with one another, that will eventually like trickle down and help us to build relationships with our students, and then our students to build relationships with one another. So.
Part of the plan is also to, on the long run, to have our students also facilitate, be the facilitators of circles. And it will be helpful to develop that sense of community, not only classroom community, but the whole school-wide community that we want to develop, and keep a little bit of the DNA of our schools.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions? No? Mike?
Well, I just want to thank both teams, not just the people who are here, but all the families, communities, students, and staff who participated. And, you know, I think, kind of three things come to mind that I just want to say. One is just the amount of overlap between some, the goals between the schools. If we're doing this, when I was a principal at Crocker Farm, I remember doing it, and there was significantly less overlap, and, and I think that's a testament to our elementary leaders who want to learn from each other. I mean, there was a reference before to some work on gender identity, and, and some of our schools have taken the lead, and we had a meeting recently, administrative lead team meeting, where one of the counselors and assistant principals from one of the schools said, here's what we're doing, here's how we did it. And, you know, so there's a lot of that that happens, and that only can happen because we have a collaborative group of people leading our schools. And so I just want to thank, and you'll see Crocker Farm next month, and, but they're part of this whole mix as well. So the first thing was just really noticing that. I think the second thing is just the level of engagement. I can't remember, having done this before, the level, having seen school improvement plans with the level of community engagement that these have developed, and, and we talked a lot about that, but talking about it and doing it are two really different things, and just want to really compliment these teams for that. And, and I would say that, you'll hear that from Crocker Farm as well, that there was a lot of communication between the schools on, on methods and protocols, and this is our template of meetings, and how, you know, and, and that's, that's really important to hear. And the third is just, I feel really appreciative that our schools are in such good shape. They're headed in their directions that I think are consistent with, certainly for me, but also for the, for the committee and the community. And, you know, it's, it's really, hopefully if someone has questions that are individual, they need to, you know, go to, you know, reach out to folks. But at a broader level, the direction of the schools is so positive. And, you know, I feel really heartened, a little emotional about just, you know, where we're headed and the amount of work that went into this, and that our path moving forward has, has so many important characteristics, and it's so well-thought-out. So I just want to really thank our Wildwood and Fort River friends here, both here and, and those who aren't here, for who, who contributed to setting this in motion, because it is, you know, one of my goals and our goals, your goal for me, is to think of some longer-range planning, and not just live in the moment, but to really think through where do we want to be in a couple of years. And for these two schools in particular, who are undergoing a change a couple of years from now, all the more important to have this mapped out. So thank all of you, I'm just very, very appreciative of all the work that went into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These kinds of presentations and discussions are always the best part about being in school committee, frankly, so I really appreciate it. So speaking of, our next topic is the school building project update. And this is a, a happy topic. Because our last meeting, we were, it was right before the vote, and we, we didn't know where it could go. And, and so I think, you know, smiles all around, a lot of celebration, a phenomenal showing of support from the community for this project. We talked at length about that at the last time, so I'm not going to repeat myself. And that means that it's, you know, the project isn't over, there's a ton of work ahead. Thank you to Ben and Mike and others serving on the, representing us on the building committee, which is where a lot of the work is happening. But some of the things that we, Mike, you mentioned it in the, in talking, listening to the school improvement plans, does involve us and, and this committee. And one of them is, is naming this new school and bringing that together, and there's others, but Mike?
Before we do the naming, could I just share a little bit for people who are wanting to continue, hopefully lots of people wanting to continue to be engaged? I think a big thank you just to everyone who contributed to the effort for the school to pass. I want to particularly thank people who may have disagreed on the prior building project, and for many of them came together to support the current one. That's not an easy process, and, and lots of thank-yous, but it just, I just want to note that there was a lot of people working really hard. I couldn't be one of them, so I was observing because of my role, so I was observing from afar. But I really want to thank each and every person who was contributing to that effort. And starting tomorrow, so speaking of, the, the process continues, just, I just thought it'd be worth sharing with the public that the structure has shifted. There will still be school building committee meetings, but a lot of it is happening in, in subgroups, subcommittees, I should say. And there's ones on kind of the fields and the outside spaces, some of the, you know, interior spaces. But there's a number of meetings that are going to be, going on that are in subcommittees to try to get more in the nuts and bolts over the next four to five months, because the idea is that we're now in design development, which is getting more concrete in terms of what plans are. You know, we sort of, you have to build this, you know, draw up the designs for getting to project scope and budget, and then the next level of refinement is starting already. And so we're already getting some excellent feedback from members of the community on a variety of things, and please keep that feedback coming, because the project's happening, which is exciting, and we, there's still many, many decisions to make along the way. So just wanted to share that before we moved on, that it's not like, okay, yeah, we'll see you in five months. It's, there's lots and lots of work, and it's being done in, in public and subcommittee meetings, and folks are welcome to come.
Is that information about their schedule on the project website?
Good question. I will check that right now. I know it's on the town, you know, like for people who go to postings, but it should be on that website, but since I don't manage it, I am going to double-check. And if not, then I will bring it to the people who run the website, too. I don't believe I see it. That is good feedback for me to share with that group. But thank you for the question. But I just wanted to share that, you know, and more generally, work continues. It's, it's actually, to me, very exciting work, A, because you know what's happening. Like, it's great to be hopeful, but, right, it's, it's now we know what's happening. But also, these are where we're getting closer to, you know, again, more discreet. A lot of the decisions that were made about site, right, that was, can't change that one now, right on the front end, but now we're getting into, okay, how exactly do these things situate what, you know, this, like, we're going to have to talk about playgrounds and, and things that are, I think, really important to people that right now, before we talked about, oh, playgrounds are going to be over here. Now it's like, what attributes are we going to have? What are things that are important? Do we want to have swings, and how accessible? Right, that's the kind of thing that I think actually is a lot more accessible than some of the prior conversations that we've had, so. But yeah, so our first one, we have, there's two subcommittee meetings tomorrow, I should say. There's a site subcommittee meeting, and I'm double-checking. And looking at key spaces like cafeteria, kitchen, you know, some of those areas about some of the inside of the building, as well as some of the site pieces. So lots happening. Some feedback we've gotten about basketball courts, and where they should be, and playground location, and, you know, phasing, right? Because it's, you know, you want to make sure you have as much done as you can when students arrive, but some of this, because it's an active site, you can't totally control all of that. So lots of good conversations. Some of the meetings will be in-person, some are Zoom, tomorrow is Zoom. So, you know, we encourage people, members of the public, to attend. And I will take the feedback about the website back to the group.
Any questions on the building committee? So I think, you know, this is, this is a, this agenda item is, is really an open discussion to get us started in thinking about some of the things that we as the, as the school committee will have to make decisions on, or at least spearhead and, and lead in the lead-up to the opening of our new school building. Talking about naming, I think the other one, you know, when we, when we think about bringing two school communities together, two obviously very strong and healthy school communities, bringing them together into a, a single phenomenal new building, you know, there's two key things. So naming is a way to bring them together, and I think the other piece that we haven't talked about as much is enrollment zone. Because even, even my kids just realized, they, they just added it up, and they're like, wait, how's everybody going to fit in there? And they're like, so, you know, I think that, and that's, each of these things can be multi-year kind of decision processes. So the sooner we're talking about them, because we'll want to have a highly engaged, very similar to the whole building project up until now, but also the school improvement plans. And so, you know, we don't want these things to be sort of left until the last minute, and deciding on a name and an enrollment zone, you know, three months before the building opens, and would not sort of be conducive to supporting a continuation of that strong community, in my personal opinion. Did you want to say?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't want to mix topics, but I do think, you know, the two areas you mentioned, the naming process as well as enrollment zone, you know, I imagine they'd be things that I would be proposing in goals for myself next year, just that they're, they're, to your point, I don't think they're things that we solve in the next two months.
Yeah.
And, and probably the times of engagement, when kids come back to school in the fall, is actually, and families come back, is a perfect time to start that process. Because, you know, I think now we're going to let people celebrate, hopefully who voted yes, celebrate the victory. But I think, to me, I'd like to say that I'd like to have both of those pretty close to done at the, a year from now, you know, when we're at the end of the next fiscal year, because I think that gives enough time for the process, but also enough time for the engagement. You know, the enrollment zone, I think you always have to have a plan, and then see how it adapts, right? If there's new housing developments, it might shift things. But to me, I, I do think those are long-term goals that, you know, I don't want to both rush through in a month or two, but I also don't want to wait two years to get to them, because I think you're right. The anxiety, once we get closer to 2026, will rise, and the number of variables we can have settled is going to help when the schools merge, more smoothly, more smoothly.
I think one of the sort of waterfall effects will also be sort of re, relooking at the enrollment policy for Comenantes, given, given the change also.
For sure.
So, you know, that would be sort of step three in there. But that, that's another one that, you know, we don't want to wait until the year before to have that sort of lined up. Peter?
Yeah, another subtopic that that impacts potentially would be sibling policy with our specialized, specialized programs that we've talked about several times. So I'm very glad that you mentioned on superintendent goals. I'm, I'm checking that box that I just wrote down 20 seconds ago. Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad Allison brought it up. I mean, I don't think everyone in the community realizes that if you are currently in the Fort River and Wildwood enrollment zones, you might not necessarily be there when the school opens. And same thing for Crocker Farm, right? If you're currently in the Crocker Farm zone, you might not be there. So this, you know, that has major impacts to people's planning and, and whatnot. So I'm, so I'm, I'm glad to hear you saying, I'm totally on board, that, you know, we don't want to rush the process, but I think, you know, when you, when your thumb, thumb, what's the word? Thumb, estimating, I'm just going to say estimating. When you're estimating the timeline for something, about a year from now, to, to be pretty close to decided, I think is, is in the right zone. I think, you know, the earlier we can define the process and a decision date for people, I think would be really important, and, and sort of committing to that. And then having, Dr. Morris, having you lead the way about like, what are the major, what, what goes into deciding an enrollment zone? What, what are the factors, right? It, it'll be a little different than last time, hopefully simpler than last time in terms of drawing zones with, with two schools as opposed to three, and a, a number of the considerations, you know, that go into that. So I'm sure we will come out on the other side of it, but I, I think that, it's certainly a topic that, that has the potential for spirited debate, let's put it that way, given, you know, everyone's excitement about the, the new facility, so.
Okay. What's shown here is, Mike referenced it earlier, was another community, I think their building is going to be opening this next fall? Twenty, it might be '24.
In that vicinity, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's sooner than ours, so they're, they're ahead of us. One thing I noticed in looking at their, at their building website, their project website, and their initial naming process timeline, and where they landed, was that it grew. So I think your, your goal of a year from now is, is a good one. Sort of, you know, making sure that it is complete well before. But I, I, you know, as we, as we go into this, and I like the idea of sort of setting it up as, as a goal, superintendent goal for, for next year, I thought that the process that they outlined, and, and just how detailed the communication was with the community, also about what the process would be and how decisions will be made, because again, we know that it's a very spirited community that will have strong opinions, I'm sure. But I also really appreciated how they planned the involvement of students as well as, as community members in that. And, and it's a way also for building that community, for that new school building, you know, along the way, not just, not just sort of after the fact by having a new name, so.
It's this fall coming up that it, that school's opening, yeah.
I don't know if there's anything more that we want to add right now? Jennifer?
I'll just say, I, I.
Uh-oh, you're off.
Can you borrow mine?
Okay, thank you. Just glancing at this East Veterans School Building Project timeline, I, it, I like that it's nice and long, and that it's very, there's a lot of deliberation in it, and it, it's, gives plenty of time and opportunities to get input from many different constituents, so I think that's a, it's a nice, you might not exactly want to follow the same model, but it's a nice model to start with.
Anything more on that topic? Yep, okay. Next up, and somewhat related.
So, I wondered if we could have a three-minute, just brief break?
Yeah.
Sorry, just because I think you probably want to talk, me to talk about the next agenda item, so otherwise I would just go myself.
Okay, yes. We'll make it five minutes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry about that.
We're back. So next up is class size policy. And just for background, we had talked about sort of in, coming through our budget discussions when we were talking about the enrollment-driven changes in staffing, our staffing models at the elementary school. We were, we expressed an interest in examining our class size policies in case we wanted to rethink them or at least just review them to see if, if changes were desired or needed. So I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
Sure. So I, I tried to gather information for the committee and the community in two different ways. One was through, just looking on policy handbooks, almost every district has them online. So I looked at some of our comparison districts and local districts. And I also put out an email to my, the superintendent listserv. So what I found is there's a significant number that was surprised to me that don't have a class size policy. And that's not good or bad, but just my assumption, my false assumption was that sort of this is like a lot of the other policies in school committee, in books that, you know, in MASC and their kind of model book, there is no such policy on this. There were a couple of districts that had policies, that didn't have policies, but they had like vegetarian guidelines or was in teacher contracts, so I listed those. And then I listed a bunch of the districts that did either send them in or I was able to locate them in a public resource with, with direct links when it was shared with me or it was able to be found. So a summary, a poor summary perhaps, is that there's truly no rhyme or reason in Massachusetts with class size policies, that there's, whether people have them and what they look like, or whether they're in policy or in contracts, looks really different district to district. So on the positive, we have a lot of examples to look at, or at least a fair number of examples, but, you know, I, I come back, you know, with a lot more information than the last time we spoke in terms of what other districts are doing after having done this research. But that's, you know, sort of where we are. I can, I can answer whatever questions we have about the document. I think it's, it's four pages long or so with what I found, but this is sort of the raw resource of what it is. You know, I think, fair to say, a number of the districts were in pretty similar vicinity of, but then there's other ones like PBD, you know, which is significantly higher, Chicopee, which is significantly higher. And then there's a, there's a number of districts that we're very, very similar to, you know, I mean, Framingham had an interest in one, plus or minus three, plus or minus four, that just had a different sort of structure and organization than some of the other ones. But really, the, the job that, you know, I tried to do was provide you with what other districts are doing, what that looks like for your consideration.
I think what struck me was, at least the ones that have a policy, with the exceptions that you noted in terms of much larger sizes, that they were all within the same ballpark and all lower than what DESI use as a guideline for education plans for.
MSBA.
For MSBA, sorry, MSBA uses. So that sort of, because we had that conversation when we were building the, the, our education Do we have data on sort of average class size for the, and, and just sort of, this is more a rhetorical question, but on, for ones that don't have a policy, do they generally have much larger classes? Or is it just that they haven't written it down? I mean, that, that's, I guess, the question that's in my head is, is it only ones that, are we seeing policies only for districts that intentionally want smaller class sizes and, and others just don't have?
No, I, I would not. I didn't see a correlation there. I mean, you have some, like Long Meadow has very similar class size to us, very, very low compared to other, our partner districts in Western Massachusetts, they don't have a policy. Some of the other ones I know, Cambridge, Sharon also have relatively low class sizes. There's other ones on here that have higher class sizes, don't have a policy. And even within the policies, as I mentioned, a couple of examples that are in the higher range and some that are in the lower range. So I, I think there's no rhyme or reason to who has a policy and who doesn't. There's nothing I could tell in terms of, you know, who, who has a policy and who doesn't.
Interesting. Peter?
So thanks for putting this together. It is interesting how divergent it is across the, across the state. I, I guess that the two, two things that, that I'm, I'm trying to figure out in terms of trying to hone in on a class policy, one is, is trying to calibrate what it means given that we have like the co-teaching model. And, and moreover, like, kind of taking a step back and saying, what, what is the metric that we want to be looking at here in terms of putting it into policy? Class size is, is like the classic one everybody, it's like the pie chart of, of school metrics, right? Everyone understands what you're talking about when you say class size. And, and yet, is, is that the right number that we ought to be focusing on? I, I don't have an answer to this yet, but you know, with, if there are two fully capable teachers in a classroom, then your student-to-teacher ratio is different than, than your class size, right? And so is that what we ought to be looking at instead? And then if you, if you dig down further, well, you know, often you have some one-to-one aides or you have shared aides. And so, so should you factor that into, to student-teacher? And then, you know, that's the main classroom, but you know, especially in earlier grades, you're, you're moving around over the course of the day to different teachers. And so how, how do you factor that in? And then obviously, class size is not the only thing that impacts education quality, right? This is one. And so, you know, before I sort of just jump to like, well, this should be 20 and this should be 18 and this should be, and then we'll feel good about that, it, it sort of, it makes me pause and say, well, what is it that we're trying to accomplish with the policy in terms of, you know, I, I think it's, I, I, my sense is, you know, the reason why this, this comes up as opposed to more nuanced measures is that it's, 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 you know, trying to define quantitatively what a qualitative, good education is possible. And so it's, what do you do? It's, this is just one of those things that naturally. So I, I guess I, you know, just, I'm not, I don't need a full answer from you tonight, but just to, to sort of think about what that means from your educated perspective. The, the other thing that I think would really help inform my thinking on this is just to, to hear what you've heard over the years from teachers about class size. Because if, if I'm thinking about, you know, who's the most informed about the impact of class size, it's going to be the teachers in the classes. And I'm sure, you know, across, you've been here long enough, I'm sure you've heard from teachers from every grade about, you know, class size or, or concerns about class size or, or to, you know, occasionally. But I would be interested if you, do you hear it, do you, is there one grade that you hear it more frequently about? You know, that would be interesting data. Is, is there one grade, are there certain grades that you feel more concerned about class size? So for example, I would, my immediate thought is, if this is, it's more important in K-2 to have, you know, really personalized instruction in order to provide that extra attention if necessary prior to, you know, the development of. So this is just some initial thought. I don't really have any hard opinion at this point, just more like, what are the questions I want to see explored?
Mike?
Yeah, I think, you know, anecdotally, I think you'd hear teachers rightfully say, if they're smaller classes, you can give more individualized attention and support to students, more time, you know, if you think of, you have 16 families instead of 22 families, that allows for a lot more opportunities for, for family engagement. And those are all real. And I think that this is one of these issues in education that, that gets people, what's the right word? It's a place where lived experience and anecdotal experience and research don't always match. And that's a really hard, when do we have those opportunities? It's really hard. So the research would suggest K-1, 2 maybe, as being areas where class size truly makes a difference. And when you get above that, it, it makes a difference, but it's a, it's not as much. And then, you know, I think as much as teachers would want lower class size, and I agree with them, they also want to have the necessary supports for ELLs, you know, Special Education Title I, and we don't live in, you know, hence our earlier conversation, we don't live in days where we have infinite budgets. We never did, but we particularly don't right now. So we all have forced choices. We had in this budget process, and Allison, myself and Doug, we're talking about the AMRS budget before, and why did we make a decision on classroom teachers versus some other things? And, you know, I was able to at least share with the town council my, my initial thinking and what I shared with, with this body as well as the public about that. And so, you know, right now, those numbers, because they're guidelines, they're not fixed, you know, like if, if a 24th kid comes at X grade level, therefore you add a section if, even if it's in January. Like, I guess for me, I'd, I'd want to, our team to continue to have flexibility to think about, you know, how that goes. My concern isn't as much for now or next year, it's more for years moving forward, given our earlier conversation, right? And, you know, I think, again, I, I agree with your concern about the, the working group looking at fiscal sustainability, that there, there's, that, that group won't magically find ways to resolve all the problems, it's trying to have an approach to solve those. So, you know, I don't think it's anything, I feel urgency right now that we need to change, but I do, glad we're talking about it, glad it's on the radar, because I think like many districts, again, I referenced the meeting I had with the secretary just yesterday, we're all in this place where we're going to be struggling with maintaining the same level of resources and supports for, for our students. And so that's, I think, where I'd like to, you know, continue to talk about this. I mean, certainly if the committee wants to dig in right now, it can, but it's, it may be a topic we need to come back to in the fall or winter of next year when we're having some active conversations on this.
I think it, yes, I agree that it's, it's not an urgent thing that we need to be, like, we need to end the school year with a new policy. And because I do think it's a, it's a conversation that we need to be happening, having sort of over a period of time. And, and I had similar thoughts about sort of, you, what, what you just raised, Peter, about, you know, what is, what is the goal? Because maybe the, a class size policy is not sort of the tool to wield in order to achieve that goal, right? So if it's individualized instruction, is there another met, metric that, you know, if we, if we continue with a policy, is it, you know, focused more on sort of numbers of students per adults, you know, in a, in a teaching role in the room? And when I think about sort of the, you know, the design of the new school and, and sort of the way, you know, some of the things that we've incorporated also in, in Crocker Farm and moving cubbies and creating more space is this notion of even more pullouts and project-based pullouts. So student learning isn't going to be happening in sort of the way that at least I had for a lot of my elementary years, just sitting in rows in a classroom with one teacher in the front of the room and everybody receiving instruction. So whereas a class size policy is kind of built off of that model, that sort of thought process, right? It's like, well, if there's 25 kids in the room and there's one teacher and they're all sitting there, the ability of that teacher to do, provide individualized or differentiated instruction is going to be much more limited than if there's only 15 in the room. And we know that there's so many more adults in the room and so many more things happening in, in a classroom than maybe when these policies were initially written. So, you know, I, I would like to see that part of the conversation is sort of think, is just creatively thinking about sort of what is, what is the, the goal that we want to achieve? And then also that, that pie in terms of what's affordable as well. Like not putting, not putting into policy and, and sort of scribing that, that then limits us from a, from a fiscal perspective as well. Any other thoughts? So to be continued. Next is superintendent evaluation. So what I attached here is last year's instrument. I hope that was obvious to folks that that was not magically the new instrument. What I wanted tonight to focus on is, if, if we can remember back to 11 months ago, sort of our experience with take, using this survey. So before sort of taking, because it's, it's pretty much, you know, we take the goals, the superintendent goals and, and push, put it into the survey instrument. And so what I really want to hear is our experience in taking this survey and any thoughts for changes that we might want to see? Like was there, we made some changes to the instrument last year in coming to this that we thought simplified it. So I guess that would be the first question is, did we feel like it was simplified? Are there approaches to the instrument, different approaches that folks would like to see? Peter?
So, so just as background, there's, if, if I'm correct, there's not a lot of leeway that we had because we're following the standard, you know, rubric of, of how we evaluate. I mean, just a couple of minor details. And overall, I think this is the kind of, you know, I, I don't see any reason for radical change at this point. The question at the very end, the, after you do all the check, the radio button ratings, rate impact on student learning, low, moderate, or high? I've, I've never found that a useful question. I don't know if it's required by the rubric. So, I mean, just, just for people watching at home, if they're not looking at this document, you know, you have the areas and then within that you have the subareas. And at the end, you have this total overall rating. And in addition to that, rate impact on student learning low, medium. It just seems superfluous after all the other individual enrolled up ratings. So I'm not like, if somebody really wants it in there, I'm not opposed to it, but it just, it didn't seem necessary. The, the other thing that, that seems, that complicates it, but I don't know if there's a way around it, is, is when you, you have, you have the roll-up of the, if I'm going to get the terms right here. See, the, the elements within the, or the indicators within the elements, am I saying that correctly? The indicators, okay. So you have the, you might have one element with, with say two indicators, then you have an individual rating in each of the indicators, and then you're asked at the, you know, give me a, a rating at this level. That seems superfluous, but again, I don't know if that's a requirement of the, Mike has to say.
I think this is where Mike.
Yeah, so actually, the good news is that the revised rubric that the state had simplified the documents so that that is less of a problem now. So I think you'll see that when I do the artifacts document, that there's not. the artifacts document, that there's not layers upon layers upon layers upon layers. It's like one fewer layer, but the one fewer layer actually smoothed things out considerably.
So speaking of, I think what I also attached or linked to is the, the goals. And I don't know if we went through the process of adding the, I don't know if it's elements or indicators.
Yeah, so I did that after they were approved. So you'll see that when I provide the artifact document, that I link them to the relevant, relevant standards, the aspects and the standards.
Okay. What do folks think about the, Peter's proposal and the impact on student learning? Any? Jennifer?
So the, sorry, Mike.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So the suggestion is to just remove that question about impact on student learning at the, the very end?
Assuming it's not a required, but I don't think it is.
Let me just get there. Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with that. I, I'm fine with that suggestion.
Jennifer?
Yeah, so I was like, last year was my first time doing this. And I admit it was, I, I found it very, a little complex. Like there's elements and indicators, and then there's the artifacts, and there's goals. Like I literally had to like cut out and, and paste things in the right place so I knew like what I was, it was, I figured it out. And I don't know, I don't think, I don't know if there's a better way to do it, but I found it, I found it challenging, but I did figure it out. So I, I'm, now that I've done it once, I think I'm better. And if you're saying there's a level that's been removed to make it less complex, I'm fine with it the way it is with that suggestion.
Okay. I, I share that sense. I don't think I thought to copy, cut and paste, that's a good idea, actually. But, but it is, it is complex and I'm happy about the change. I think it will help. So we'll, we'll move, remove that question, that rating on student impact. I think from a timeline perspective, which kind of gets to our next topic anyway, we have right now two more meetings, I believe.
Thirteenth and the 27th, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll have the artifacts presentation on the same evening as we have the approval of the instrument. And then we'll need to very quickly go into, like, complete the, complete the evaluation probably in, you know, a week. Make sure there's a weekend in there because I know we all need those. And then a week before, in order to pull together the summative memo summarizing our, our evaluations for that last meeting. And the plan, as in the past, which is helpful that we had the conversation tonight and already have some goals ideas, is at that last meeting in June, we'll have an open conversation about, just to start to formulate goals guidance, so that when we come back after the summer break, we can go get right into formulating the goals at that, like, and so it's not November by the time we have goals. Any other thoughts on the evaluation process or timing? Does that, okay. So future agenda planning?
I can share that. I think what, you know, Allison talked about, which is superintendent evaluation, instrument, artifacts presentation, well, I'll be sharing the artifacts probably a week earlier to give people time, because it's one sort of compiled artifact document, but we can do that in public on the 13th, school improvement presentation by Crocker Farm. One topic, and we may have an outside speaker, is there's been a topic of field trips to Old Serbridge Village, given some recent developments there. And just, there's someone, MASC, acting in the role, as Worcester School community member, I should say, who's interested in coming and sharing a perspective for the group's consideration. It's not local to our district, but it is perhaps relevant. So I'm trying not to go into weeds on that because it's, we're talking about future agenda items and not beyond, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say it's related to charter school funding.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I'd said that and I didn't. And I saw the quizzical looks and I was like, what did I not say? But that's it. Sorry.
Peter?
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, yeah. Any other topics? Okay. I think, to change my screen, I think it's warrants, reports, and I have a couple. I have one. I shouldn't have signed it today because then I wouldn't have had any to read. I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of negative $227.44 dated March, May 17th, 2023, and I signed that today, May 6th, 2023. And that's it. And with that, gifts? Do we have any? No gifts. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move adjourned.
Second.
Moved by Jennifer, second by Ben. And all those in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously, four to zero.